I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't understand who made that call in this call's. I had this idea to defend it was thirty of us.
Okay, our first item is the approval of the minutes from the October twenty first to the seventeenth on here.
It's supposed to be twenty first, that's the answer.
Twenty first meeting. Gentlemen, had an opportunity. I'll make a motion to approve the meeting. Mr. Cooper. I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Motion passed.
Before you start on the claims, I'm going to explain something. You're going to see signatures from the treasurer and from the auditor now. Before you sign them, we're supposed to approve those claims, not approve the claims per se of the monies that the bank paid those.
Okay. So we have, this was part of where Beth and I and Josh and several, couple others went through the audit.
The exit, that was told to me before the exit meeting, because we're early enough. Yeah.
Okay. Well, anyway, we're the, from now on, there Beth and the treasurer are going to sign, and that just means that there's enough money to pay.
Yeah.
So we still approve if we unpaid the thing?
You're actually approving the claim.
Yeah. I have a question on this one. Carroll County Commissary, is that the chair?
Yes. What happened there, I believe, that's the claim. We, he could not get his claim over here for us to get a credit card paid in time to eliminate the fees and things like that. So he paid it from the commissary and then we reimbursed him to the commissary.
Okay, so anyway, we have the right one here. County general claiming the amount of two hundred fifty-two thousand nine hundred ninety-seven dollars and eighty-two cents. Motion approved. Second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Motion passed. And the next up is county highway. In the amount of seven hundred eighty-three thousand five hundred ninety-six dollars. A little difference here. Not much, a little bit. Seven eighty-three, five ninety-six, ninety is on the claim sheet.
Let me double check with the girls because she must have had to add something.
Do you want to take this with you? We will go on down to the other claims in the amount of one hundred ninety-eight thousand six hundred eighty-one dollars and thirty-three cents. Motion approved. Second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Motion passed. And then we have lots of claims, payroll claims.
She added something, of course, she didn't have the treasurer's sign.
Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Well, let's go back then to the highway claims, which this is the right figure of seven hundred eighty-three thousand five hundred ninety-six dollars and ninety cents. Motion approved. Second. Second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Motion passed. Two hundred and one thousand three hundred fifty-seven dollars and forty-two cents. Motion second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Motion passed.
Steven asked me about these next two, the ABC, we were waiting on a new board member that was appointed to bring in their paperwork for a new employee. We're graduating on two. One did, one did not, till after the fact. And we have, we have to pay within some weeks, well, not days, but for a board member when they turn that payroll in. And so we went ahead and paid one of them.
Okay. So we have a claim here for one hundred dollars. Motion approved. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Motion passed. And then we have a Carol Mair payroll claim, appearing in ten-five-nineteen, in the amount of three forty-eight-eight. Carol Mair. I'll say it. Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Motion passed. Good morning.
Good morning. So I'm here this morning to request an email for my part-time employee. We get email notices when we have electronic recordings, so that's how we know we have electronic emails or filings coming in. And so for her to be able to help us out with doing some of the recording of those electronics, she needs to have an email so it comes to her desk, so she can, you know, know when it's coming, because we minimize our email and set down here that we get, you know, you get a little envelope on it, so you know when you're getting something and it pops up on the screen that you're getting it. So that's how we know when we get an electronic recording coming into our office. And so that's why I'm requesting her to have an email address.
Tell me how, I'm sure you have, in the winter this year, explained a bit, explain to me again how you get a electronic recording. Who's doing that?
Okay. We have two vendors that we currently work with. One is SimpliFile and the other one is CSC. And so they both came into the office and set up the program in our system, and it's free to the county, doesn't cost the county anything, set up the system. So when the person outside of here, say a title company chooses to, what vendor they choose to go with, goes online, they file that recording with them, we get an email telling us it's there and then we can open the program and go into the program and actually it's there and then we go through the process of it. So it doesn't cost the county anything, the title company, the bank, or attorney's office or whoever's doing the filing, they pay the filing fee directly to our vendor, and they also pay a fee to the vendor to be able to have that convenience. And then that money is direct deposited into our account on the following day that the business is done.
So a closing agent does need to come in here?
No.
For the filing paperwork?
No. We don't have to worry about something getting lost in the mail, we don't have to worry about if it's wrong when they send it into us. If something's not on it, occasionally we'll get one that the notary didn't put their stamp on, or the affirmation statement that the Recorders Association in the state of Indiana requires to be on there, which is saying that they affirm under perjury that they've taken all necessary precautions to make sure there's no social security numbers on any of the documents that come into our offices anymore. If it doesn't have that affirmation statement on it, we can automatically, while we review that document, we can automatically say, oh, it's missing this, check that in the list of things that we have to return it, go directly back to them, and then within five or ten minutes, they can have that corrected and send it back to us. Whereas if we get it in the mail, it's not right, we have to, you know, fill out the form, put it back in the envelope, it takes probably the next day to go out in the mail, and then it goes back to them, and then it's the process of coming back. So it's, it's a lot quicker way of getting your documents recorded and a lot more secure way, because your documents aren't just out there in the mail, taking the opportunity of getting lost. I think when I came and spoke at first when we were going to do this, I talked about a mortgage that we had gotten from a company out in California, and they sent too much money. And by law, our office is only able to keep three dollars more than what the recording fee is. So if it's more than three dollars, we have to send it back. So I think they sent us at that time, it was probably like seven or eight dollars more than what the recording fee was. So we had to package it all up and send it all back. Well, when they sent it, they sent it FedEx or UPS, but they sent a US mail envelope to send it back in. So sent it back. I tracked that document just to see, because of it going to the other side, it took a month and a half to come back to my office to get recorded. So that person that had gotten that mortgage, if they were wanting to come in and refile a mortgage exemption in the office, they weren't able to do that because of the fact that it took that long to get back. So I just think it's, it's more secure and safer for people that are filing their documents, and it's more expedient for the title companies and those people in the, in the banks that are trying to get their, that file completed on that person, so they can move on to their other ones.
I have one other question.
Okay.
I hear all the time on the radio of advertisers for a company to make sure that your, your home has not had a mortgage filed.
HomeTitleLock.com.
Right. Now, do we have a pop on that account?
We don't. With, the company that we deal with that puts our documents online, Docs Pop, there is a place on their website where you can go and you can sign up for fraud alerts. It's free, it doesn't cost anybody anything. And then if anything is done in this county in your name, you'll get an email, and so you'll, you'll know if it was something that was done for you. We do, there is a company out there that's been, we have people that come in on occasion, we had a gentleman that came just this morning. He bought property back in October, and he got this letter in the mail telling him that he could get a copy of his deed for eighty-five dollars. Well, that's fraud. You can come to my office and get a copy of any recorded document for a dollar a page anytime you want. So, you know, I, I, the gentleman tore it up and took it with him. I'm hoping the next time I can get somebody to leave it with me and I can wipe out the pertinent information on that particular person, and hopefully maybe do something with the comment to notify people that when these come in the mail, it is fraud. Don't fall for it, don't send them the eighty-five dollars, because you can come to my office and get a copy of your deed or your mortgage for a dollar a page anytime you want.
So there's somebody out there.
Yeah. So the companies we work with are very reputable companies and they're, you know, when you go to Docs Pop, you can't see like the whole document unless you pay for it. You can see this much of it. They highlight that much of it to see the document. So unless you're willing to go on and put your name on there and open an account to pay for that document, you can't get the whole document.
I think that's one of the good things, I think, with personal policy.
I don't know about the personal policy, but part-timers do not have emails, and that's why Randy came to me to see if it was okay. And I said, well, I don't know if I am, I've had the commissioners.
Can you do a Gmail account for it?
The only problem with, anybody should not have a personal account that's doing any county business.
Right, no, you cannot do that.
You would own it, you'd have the rights to it, you'd just let her have the access to it. Because all you're going to do is just back and forth.
I, I don't think that is a good idea. Anyway, the part-time, and then also the email will cost seventy-four dollars, and I think that she had agreed with Randy.
Yeah, I would pay it out of my perpetuation.
But no, I think, I mean, there's other people out, other departments that wanted part-time email accounts, and we haven't, I'm not in here, but we've just always said no, that we.
Why do we say no? What's the reason in all that a part-time will have, is the expense of it, or?
Right, because they can quit tomorrow?
I don't know.
Then you have to have another new email.
Yeah, but the thing about it is, the email that we have in our office, my email is CCrecorder@carrollcountyin.gov, was the same email that Mary Ann had. So when I came in, I, I took over that email. My first deputy has recorder deputy, so when she's gone, the next person that comes in. This one's going to be recorder clerk at Carroll County I, so it's not a personal email, we're not putting anybody's names on it. So that email will continue with whoever comes in, so it's not like we're having to change it every time. So, because like I said, my email's not Penny Titus@CarrollCountyIn, it's CCrecorder.
Right. I think they're all set up that way.
Yeah, so it's not like it's a personal email.
I was just telling you.
I couldn't find one either. I couldn't find my personnel book, just to see if that was actually.
Do we have a comment?
Yes, sir. On the personal emails, I'm going to get out on you guys' agenda at another time, but doing county business over personal emails and then pushing it in, that is a huge cybersecurity issue.
So we're going to do it.
So I'm going to, I'll get on you guys' agenda to talk about that, but anybody, like she said, anybody who works for the county should have a government email.
Yeah, and we, we've been doing that. I mean, there's a couple out there that we have found, and we're trying to get rid of those. And, but what I'm saying is, today we're talking about the seventy-four dollars that I can't approve because it's coming out of your budget, and it should probably come out for reporter's perpetuation budget, because that's where that person is getting paid out of. And I don't know. I mean, I've had other people ask about part-timers having emails.
Maybe we need to review our personal policies on emails.
I really don't know what's in there.
I guess the biggest thing that, you know, working in the federal government before, you don't do anything over personal email, because if something comes up and somebody wants to subpoena your email, they can get everything in your personal email. So if it's a government email, it's, it should be only government business is going on with the email and, and we also have, we also have people that call into our office quite often and they want copies of documents. And we do take credit card over the phone, and so that way they don't have to send a check in and wait to get the document. We can do it all over the phone, as soon as it runs through, we email the document along with their receipt to them, so she could be able to help when somebody calls in and wants a copy of the document too, as well, by doing it with email.
I'm in favor of it.
It sounds like the email really belonged to your office, so have to put our emails. I just think it's kind of a war just for all the other part-timers.
Yes, that would be for her office.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, no, it would be, it would be recorder clerk at CarrollCountyIn.gov.
Actually, we need to kind of put the thing where, you know, the elected office, the elected official, the first one to get it, and after that, that office has to pay for that, you know, if they won't get it.
That's what she said, she'll do it if she'll live.
I mean, that's what I understood.
Right. No, that's true, that's what, I talked with Randy about it to find out what it would cost to do that, so.
Seventy-four, you.
Yes, yeah.
Well, I entertain a motion one way or the other, gentlemen.
I know she's into it, but it's going to open the warms for everybody else who wants it, so my motion would be to approve it as long as that office pays for the additional thirty.
Second, a motion and second to approve the email as long as that office pays for it. I would call for a vote. All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so next is the, uh, can I clarify that motion, because you want to say reporter's office, so it's not for alone, or do you want any office?
Any office, as long as they, you know, they want, they got the money in their budget to pay for it, they can pay for it.
Well, but the problem is, and I'm not trying to be.
Right, here's the money lady.
But when we get that bill, it comes into the commissioners', you know, we're going to have to remember that she pays it, and we'll remember that part, because she's different in people.
Do you get the bill directly to you, or does it come to the?
He pays for everybody's email, other than this one so far. And in like, APC pays for theirs.
So you got a list on who has to pay for what, when it comes in? So maybe on your list you need to add, like if the coroner's office wants to add her two deputies, she got to pay for it.
So you've already told them, no.
Under this motion, she can have them, but she has to pay them out of her budget if she can afford it.
Okay.
So the next time, the next thing on, on my list is shredding.
Just what?
Shredding.
Shred, yeah.
We had the Records Commission Board met on October the tenth, so we have scheduled the shredding for December the tenth with EcoShred. And we paid that out of the solid waste district, is that where we get it from? In the past, I think.
In the past.
We've just, who's done it.
Paid it as a contract.
Yeah.
Got reimbursed.
Last year, yeah, last year we, our, our bill was a hundred and eighty dollars. I don't know that it would be much less than that this year. We didn't have a lot of people say that they had a lot of things to get rid of, so I can't imagine it. I think normally we say it's three hundred, three hundred dollars.
Steven right about has nothing.
Throw him under the bus, Bill.
So we, like I said, we have that scheduled for December the tenth, so I just asking that, you know, we have the funds to be able to pay for the shredding stuff.
So where are we getting the funds from?
I'm, I can't remember, but we, I don't know, but we'll pay it, where, where we paid it from last year. I forgot to do that.
Okay, what about the township spring shredding in?
If they didn't submit things to the commission, yeah. And, and we have had people that have brought stuff in.
So county pays for that?
Uh huh, yeah, because we've seen what they've brought in, and usually that's not, they don't bring a ton of stuff with them. I mean, we will know year to year if we have a huge list of people that submit their, their notice of destruction or their requests for destruction, so we kind of know how much we have, it's going to, you know, every year, so we can kind of gauge it from years past.
I think we're already under contract with them, too, because I think they go to Sheriff's Department once every two months.
I think it's already locked down, or once a month, I don't know. So, but last year, our bill was a hundred and eighty dollars to have them shred what we shredded last year.
This is meaningful, the meeting that we had, and, you know, for those, those entities to be able to bring it in and shred it. If you don't have a destruction form, then I don't believe that that's what this is for.
No, that's correct, that's correct. And Carroll High School is one that submits, but they never bring theirs in, they have their own shredding, so we never have to pay for their shredding. It's basically just the county offices that are here that bring things in, so.
What about dog tags?
I don't know. It doesn't have anything to do with the Records Commission, so.
Oh, they're, it's, it's a government.
Well, you'd have to check with Penn.
I don't think that's, I don't think that's listed.
I'm talking about animal dog tags.
Yeah, but I don't think that that's, I don't think that's listed on, I don't think that's listed anywhere on a retention schedule for trustees or for the general retention schedule.
Okay.
Thank you, Novinski.
To give permission first.
Yeah, I would, I would talk to, I would talk to your township trustees association and find out from them probably what, what they would recommend for that, but I don't think that's listed anywhere on the retention schedules.
And have you worked it out that they can give us a bill right away?
Yes.
So I can turn that in, because we're trying to get the rest of our green.
Yeah, they will, the guy will total up how much poundage they do, he'll give me a little receipt, they'll go back to the office and then they'll give, email me a bill that same day, so.
Okay, that'd be great.
Motion approved. I'll say. A motion and a second to approve the paying of the money for shredding. All in favor, please say aye.
Thank you.
Done. Thank you. Assessor's office.
Hi, how are you? I just have the contract and the contract that I need to sign. The money that's been approved by the council and it's for our new aerials for the county, they're going to fly in this morning, so we just have to get the contracts signed and send back to them design. They're in Rochester, New York, so they could be here, so we're just going to have you guys sign, email it, and we'll get it back.
Is this required by the state, to have these aerials ever so often, or?
Um, no, but we, our last ones were done in two thousand sixteen, so they're going to fly in this spring.
But this, hey, could you explain the bill of the morning that you talked to me about, because I had questions on this?
Yes, the, it's a phased program, and the council approved the money for twenty twenty. And, but the, to get on the schedule to do the, the flyover when the leaves are all off the trees and then turn it in now, so, but, but the money has been appropriated and they changed the contract, so the payment's not due until twenty twenty. This is to, we're very, very right, I understand the first responders are very much familiar with this and they ask the council to approve the money, because they can see very clearly in real time, it can make records.
Yeah, these are much better aerials than our current ones. They'll be flown closer, and then in the urban areas, we'll have even closer aerials and they're the full look around. So they'll be able to see all four sides of every building. And then also, pictometry has all of our surrounding counties, so for emergency responders, surveyor, everybody, they'll be able to see all of the surrounding counties as well. So if there's an emergency that's on the county line, they'll be able to see all of the property as well, so.
And we get that on record, that the council approved?
Yes, I think.
Motion to approve contract for aerials, or assessor's, assessor's office, I'm sorry. I'll say.
Yeah, a motion and a second. I have a question. Is there any, does a person have any right to privacy, or is somebody flying over taking pictures of their home, or their?
No. Anything that can be seen from the exterior, this is, just, they're not going to look inside.
So you don't, you do not have an expectation of privacy of anything on the outside of your house?
If you do, it's been determined as you go. I think, you know, it's unreasonable. I mean, you know, this is pretty, pretty common nationwide, one of the things, you know, technology's got to handle the constitution on this.
Okay, I have a motion and a second.
I want to clarify that the council did approve it for the budget for two thousand twenty. Our budgets haven't been approved, but they have approved. And our budgets haven't been approved, but they have approved it for reassessing.
Takes big steps for the contract. You can see the schedule and you can see that language in there.
So this is all dependent on if our budget gets approved then?
Well, it's.
It's, it's, it's been approved.
Do you have a signature place on this?
Ah, yes. Yeah, it's one signature.
Here's the one.
It's a total of a hundred and fourteen thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
Do they do this with drones or with real airplanes or?
I don't know.
Probably the Russian side. I had a lady calling this weekend saying that four drones fly over the top of her house. I don't know. But I just read that this was coming up and I thought.
The state still uses planes as well.
Okay, I'll wait. I've lost track here. Did we vote yet?
No.
No, we got a motion and a second. All right, okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Love you.
It does have a non-appropriation clause that is just moving as I wrote before. Even though the total program goes over six-year period. Twenty twenty first year, three years of phase one and three years of phase two. It asks if there's a reason that, that the budget did not be appropriated, that the agreement is canceled. So it's not a, you know, it's, it's, it implies it's in the end law by having that clause in it.
Right, so thirty thousand dollars within this flat area, several buildings in twenty twenty year.
Do you use that to check to find out if there's buildings that haven't had a building permit along?
Yeah, we, yes, until the original comes back. What we do are assessing, um, our big thing is checking to make sure what buildings are on which parcel. So we use it for the G M S and that says, and she has, when she goes out, she's saying, um, if those buildings she can't see from the road, she can see them on that aerial map. So she can verify that, okay, yeah, it might have still been there at least a couple of years ago. And then we keep the old aerials and she can see, okay, it looked like it was there in two thousand and sixteen. So she knows roughly how old it was a long while. Thank you.
Thank you.
Henry Highway. Morning. It's that time of year when we need to take bids for stone and fuel. And I'd like permission from you to set December the second as that date for your permission being to accept those bids.
Motion to approve some stuff for the bids on stone and fuel.
Motion and second to approve for bids. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Thank you. And then good old circle drawing.
That's a cluster.
I, I went down here on Friday and surprisingly, there was no vehicles parked along the retaining wall. And I was kind of shocked, to be honest with you. So I'm not sure what the situation is, but I don't know what your opinion is. It's kind of like a one-lane alley in a circle. That's the best way I can describe it. But I think that it would be beneficial to us to be able to put no parking signs up along that retaining wall there. Because particularly in the wintertime, it makes it almost impossible for us to do a very good job of getting snow through there and out of there. There's no place to put the snow, number one, off to the side. And number two, just trying to kind of get through there is another obstacle that we'd like to remove. It's, it's one of those little peculiar places and I don't know what your opinion is. Hopefully I had a chance to look at it, but I'd entertain any thoughts you might have in terms of, you know, looking at it.
Did we find out if we even owned it?
Pardon?
Did we find out if we even owned it?
I would, I did, we did check that and look at it. It looks like the people on the inside, and part of the thing is, it's huge. In other words, before you really go down there and know where the lines are, it's very difficult. You almost have to have a survey. But it appears that people inside the circle, the ones that own the ground right there. But also, it's a pretty wide right away. So the retaining wall itself, unless you have it surveyed, I'm just kind of guessing. It appears that the retaining wall could be in the actual right away itself. So it could be the counties, I don't know how you want to say that, but unless you really get more detail with a survey. Because you try to match the properties up in there and get on beacon and things just don't drive together. I mean, the way they've got it plotted out, it's not really put in there to be, I don't know, circular and matching up with the right away being all uniform like what you would expect to find on the flat itself. So it appears that the people on the inside of the circle actually own next to it. Whether they actually, whether the retaining wall is in the, on the private property outside the right away or it's on the inside of the right away. If I have to just take a guess, as close as it is to the road and everything and as wide as the right away appears to be. It looks like the retaining wall is probably in the right way. But that's just my own personal guess. It's not based on any kind of good survey or anybody finding any property corners.
Ange?
Do you have much problem in the summertime when people park there and you can just maybe put up a sign for just the land that they can park there?
Well, part of the trouble, even, even for the summer, when we came through and tried to improve the road there, we couldn't get through with equipment. I mean, it just, it isn't wide enough, that area between, I don't know, the edge of pavement and the retaining wall. It's just, it's not wide enough even for a car. They had dump trucks parked there. Those dump trucks were probably a couple feet over on the edge of pavement itself. So realistically, if they were gonna build a retaining wall, they should have built back another six or eight feet if they wanted to put parking in there. It's just, I mean, I don't know what the answer is. I'm glad I don't live there.
I'm not very familiar with that area because that's just all the complaints down there. But I'm just trying to figure out where those people parked their cars that lived below that retaining wall.
It, it looks like to me there's a number of pull-in spots towards, I don't know where the lake properties are correct, water canal. I'm not sure what it's on. But it looks like there's perpendicular parking to the road for those people that are on that side. And I think those are the people that are parking there. It's not the people that, you know, really own the land or uphill more. So I don't, I'm not sure what the answer is.
According to beacon, it looks like there's forty parcels inside and outside on that drive, so. And forty parcels is a lot of tax air dollars.
So what's that got to do with the parking problem?
Well, it, it just needs to be addressed.
Yeah, I know how it needs to be addressed. It might be put no parking signs up so people can get through and so we can plow snow and everything. I mean, I don't, I don't see where, that's a real problem, particularly if, you know, when the people that live right along that retaining wall have spots where they can pull into, you know, off the road to the right. It's the left side when you're going down there that's a problem because you just, yeah. I understand, but I, you know, I don't know what you do if you live down there. Enforcement, I mean, enforcement is a problem. I mean, what, what you have to do is you have to have a complaint. Sheriff's Department has to come out and look at it and do something with it. I mean, and we've talked a lot. I mean, there've been times when we have not been able to plow through there. I mean, we'll come so far, plow the snow wherever we can and go around the other se, other way and see what we can do. But there are times when we have not been able to get through there plowing snow. And that's not good either for people that live there on a regular basis. So I, I, you know, I don't know. I don't have all the answers.
Do we put a no parking sign in, especially in wintertime? Make sure roads are cleared or subject to tow?
But you said it's just to maintain it. We can't get down in there and maintain the, the, you need to go through there with a patcher or anything. It's tough to get through. You can't, there's a, there's a retaining wall on each side. Really, they're not perfectly across from each other. But you got a spot through there where that you've got, you're walled in on both sides. And I can see you can't go fast enough by the way the snow plowed through that narrow area. Throw it out over the top of the, of the retaining wall. I mean, it kind of reminds me in some ways of when we redid the Lockport Bridge. We requested that we change the, change the walls on the side of the bridge, I don't remember this more. So that when you're throwing snow off, it'd go off because right now they're solid walls. And historic preservation said, oh, no, it has to go back just like it is. Well, if you go through there fast enough to throw it over the wall, you gotta be moving pretty good if you go up over there. And that's the same way you're right there. And it's a two-way street, right? So you can't, I mean, it's not one way around through there.
Well, it is. I'm not sure. So far, I've not met anybody yet.
I have.
I have. There's no place to go.
There's none. Somebody'd have to back up a long ways around the curve coming backwards through.
It's a one lane.
Ange?
Maybe you ought to put no parking signs up there and then send letters to all of the owners down there as to why you're, why you're doing it. So they understand that that's, that's the problem and explain to them you can't plow their, plow their road if you can't get through.
I, I think that's a very good suggestion in terms of public relations and maybe even giving them a chance for the wintertime situation, try to park. I mean, sometimes in the winter, I mean, when I've been down here, I mean, they'll be parked out in the road and everywhere else. And you're lucky even half the road is available for you to take a plow through there. Now, we use a smaller one-ton truck, which enables us to get down there a little bit easier. But we wouldn't even dare think about taking a single axed dump truck.
I can't imagine backing where I'm standing up to get, if you get through.
Just push them along.
There, it would be y'all wondering.
I think, I think Paul's suggestion is a good one, to drive with the signs. Or, you know, we can try something different.
I thought you said no parking during snow. Like a, during snow, start, put no parking, put, put a sign up that says no parking during snow events.
Well, in the summertime too, though, is a problem if we have something changing.
Let's try with the no parking zone. See how that works. How much do we need to have Paul put the no parking signs?
Have you wanted just along the retaining wall area?
What, what do you want, Paul?
That's, that's kind of what I'm imagining.
Just the retaining wall?
Yeah, just along the retaining wall. And I like Amy's suggestion of, we can send letters out and maybe we'll get some feedback from some people from that letter. I think that would be a, and I'm not unwilling to change anything around, but certainly for with winter coming up, it's gonna become a critical situation.
Are you gonna send the letters out?
Yeah, I can go ahead and send the letters out.
That'd be part of my motion. Retaining wall, send letters to the residents explaining what we're doing and why.
I have a motion and a second. If you put no parking signs up along the retaining wall, that'd be on both sides, right? And the highway department sent out letters explaining the situation.